Thank you. I call to order the town council regular session at 7:30 and the date is Thursday, July 12th. Welcome, and if you could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have the roll call, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of minutes of the previous meetings. We have the work session from June 25th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the regular session from June 25th, 2012.
I move approval of the regular session, June 25th, 2012.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the closed executive session, June 25th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any council person like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a farm produce license to Stony Acres Farm, Stony Acres Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, section 503.7, farm retail sales activity and development plan, approval by the planning board's technical review committee granted June 27th, 2012, application by Linda M. Stedman, 145 Stony Acres Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And is Linda here? Hi, how are you? Good. If you would just tell us a little bit about Stony Acres Farm, and the cameras are picking up all that you have to say.
Oh, it's a family-run farm.
Hold it down, Linda, excuse me, can you pull it?
There you go.
Okay, just so you talk into it.
We're a family-run farm. It's been in our family since the 40s, and my daughter has decided that she wanted to teach the kids how to, some extra vegetables and stuff that we have, instead of feeding them to the animals, to make some extra money.
How old are the children?
Eight and three.
Oh, that's great. All right. Do you have questions here at the table? We'll do Carol, and then Polly.
What kind of vegetables are you growing?
We have corn, squash, tomatoes, peppers, broccoli, pumpkins.
Nice.
Winter squash, Indian corn, and popcorn.
Wow. And when do you plan to open?
She, as soon as the stuff starts coming in.
Mm-hmm.
It's just starting now.
Great. Polly?
Will you have regular hours, Linda, or will it just be when you have the vegetables available?
Just when we have the vegetables.
Okay. Thank you.
She wants to try to open it, like, maybe on a Friday, when she's home, or, you know, a couple days during the week, instead of trying to compete with the farmer's market on Saturday.
Great.
Jim?
You're gonna have a little stand out on the road?
It's actually-
Are they coming in the farm, I'm sorry?
It's gonna be on the farm.
Okay.
We'll have to go in through our driveway, and she's gonna set it up next to the garden.
Okay, is that off Rose Hill, or coming in off?
It'll be-
138?
It's off of Stony Acres Way, but it's off of Rose Hill, through Southwood subdivision.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sing none, then.
Sounds wonderful. Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Well, Polly would-
No, Jim, go ahead.
Like to move then approval of license A.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, it brings us two comments from interested citizens, and I know someone who's gonna come to the microphone.
(laughing).
Yeah, I got home for Jeopardy, that's what I mean about that.[307.12][307.12](laughing). I made it back.
Sorry about that.
Made it back to Big, see Jeopardy, I like to watch that every night if I can. I usually get Final Jeopardy right, spot on. Okay, I've got nothing to say really, except I, I'm gonna say every week, every time I come, that I still think this should be a televised meeting, like it used to be, and I think you should do something about it, and I sure would. And I'm gonna give you another hint to save some more money. Really trivial stuff I'm doing tonight, but you see this? It's only printed on one side. An arrogance it prints on both sides.[345.12][345.12](laughing). Have a good weekend.
Bobby, we are hopefully gonna be paperless next year, when we go to electronics, so we will be better.
Uh-oh.
And I just wanna respond back. I think the price to go live was just such an exorbitant, you know, cost. I think it was the cable, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, was it like $20,000, or?
I think it was about $1,000.
About $1,000 a month. Yeah, not that, you know, with the large budget that we have.
How does an arrogance that afford it? That's what I can't figure out.
Yeah.
I mean, how come, how come they do it?
Yeah, do they video stream? I mean, I'm not sure.
It's on, I can watch it. If I don't wanna go to the meeting, I can watch it. That's what I like.
Yeah. Do you-
I mean, is it that, have you checked into other cable, I mean, are they all that expensive? I thought that was supposed to be almost free.
Yeah.
I'm ignorant about it, I admit that.
Yeah, after we switched over to video streaming, and that question came up-
I thought it was a lot cheaper than that, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think it's like $1,000 a month, and it's, go ahead.
Do you want the broadcast station to do it for nothing? But they dropped the broadcasting of the city and town council meetings. So now you either go through Cox or Verizon.
Well, now it's gonna cost me a lot of money, 'cause I'm gonna have to buy a computer and learn how to use the internet.
And when you get that computer, I will come over and show you how to run that.[455.12][455.12](laughing). Jim?
Yeah, maybe the ITVs are on the way, but more and more I think about this, I agree with you, Bob. I visit a few homes and see folks crowded around a small laptop somewhere, it really seems ridiculous. And Bob's right, a lot of poorer towns, less well-run, have the live feed. And I also thought, when the cable licenses were handed out in the state back in the early 80s, I thought they were obligated, rural communities, those with high density with apartments, I thought they were obligated to have a certain time set aside from municipalities. I thought that was part of the license granting.
It was until they changed the regulations, and the regulations were changed probably about seven years ago. Prior to that, there was a requirement for free public access. That was changed, there was revisions to the law where they set up regional public access studios for availability, but they took away the responsibility for those cable companies to be able to provide free service. A lot of this happened because the original franchises that were put out were for one company. When the second company came in and made petition, they had to change the regulations, and what they weren't gonna do is to have both of Cox and Verizon having two studios side by side, so they required that the public access would be uniform with each of the different providers being responsible for it. But in those regulation changes, the free services disappeared.
I mean, I just look at this, first, most, you know, the Providence paper closes the local branches, cable, we don't have the TV, they're keeping the, you wonder why we get so few folks interested in government here, we're not able to reach them. This is really insulting, but frankly, I wish we could find the money to bring the TV, live TV feed back. Folks need to see this in action, not a few days later, or sitting around a computer.[591.33][591.33](laughing).
Any other further comments from interested citizens? I just have a few. Tonight is ladies' night, for those of you that are watching, on Main Street, and I think it goes till eight or nine?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. And Wednesday, I attended the Washington County Regional Planning Council, it was the legislators' breakfast, and they will be looking for each town council to come up with three priorities that we will submit to Washington County Regional Planning, and it will be submitted to the legislators for January, February, March. So we're gonna try to come up with three goals that we can take up to the State House. So it was a very good breakfast, and good discussion. And then Kathy and I both attended a Boy Scout Eagle Corps of Honor in Troop One Kingston. So we have invited the three Eagle Scouts to one of our meetings to start the pledge, so we have Hunter M. Lemoy, and Joseph J. Massey, and Alan A. Santucci, so they will be coming to a meeting in the future. Any other events? Jim?
Not other events, just wanted to ask Steve. Steve, maybe I'm just always there at the wrong time, but the CVS exit on the Main Street, along with the Holly Street exit, that is a nightmare, and people coming out from across the street, the Hospital Trust, absolutely, I mean, I can't believe how many folks are just been very lucky not to have a serious accident there. It's an awful spot. And the other one I'm worried about, there's no way to pass on Route 138 by Farmer's Daughter. People have got a stop there who are doing 50, 50, 5, 60, they gotta come to a stop, there's just not enough room in the breakdown lane to avoid any potential collision, I don't know what we can do with that, with plans in place in the near future with DOT, but, boy, those two are absolutely hair-raising.
If you like, what I'll do is to submit both to the Transportation and Traffic Commission. One of the things on 138, any improvements that would be made there would need to be through the, through the State Traffic Commission, we would initiate the request, so what I can do is to have at least a preliminary review done, so that we can provide something up to the state. In some of the areas on 138 where, where you've got that type of a situation, if there's sufficient road width, they can take out the gutter lane as a means of providing a turning, an interior turning lane. But we'll have to determine whether or not the state DOT would be able to do that analysis. We can also have, have them take a look at the CVS. I think CVS is gonna be very difficult, because with the CVS, that was a requirement on private property that says that there's no left-hand turn, and it's supposed to be right turn only, but it certainly is silent as far as going directly across. So I think we can also have Transportation Committee look at that, and if there's some change that's possible to work with CVS, we've found them accommodating in the past.
I mean, just to allow an exit only, but just the folks that try to get in that access point, as well as exiting, as well as Holly Street exiting, and the folks across from the Belmonts, I mean, it's incredible nightmare.
I mean, it really depends on where you're gonna put the traffic. If you put it onto Holly, and it comes, it's gonna end up on Holly's, right up from where the existing driveway is.
I know, but at least you might-
Or you're putting it at Dale Calliope.
Yeah, but at least you might be able to keep it in one direction, you know?
The problem with the one direction there, I'll just suggest to you that the problem's gonna be the fact that there's a drive-thru which exits the traffic to, to Main Street.
Right.
But I can have Transportation Committee take a look at it.
No, I'm not disagreeing with the exiting on the Main, it's all the folks that try to enter there also. That's where your gridlock comes into play.
It may be a case that they could ask that that be an exit only.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just have a few other dates, sorry.
Okay.
We have the open house at the Adult Daycare Center this Tuesday, I think it starts at 5:30. And after that, we have been invited to tour the Sons of Liberty, so we'll be leaving the Adult Daycare Center and going over there. And just for the public's information, we will be interviewing school committee candidates this Thursday, the 19th. And for town councils' purposes, I'm hoping that we will have a recommendation for our July 30th meeting. We'll have an appointment. Carol?
Maybe I, should I wait till Steve does his report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, no, you, probably, probably no.
All right, Steve, I just wanted to ask you a few questions about Applebee's and the red versus the green awnings. I know we discussed this before, but there's been a lot of discussion in the community, feeling like, what's the big deal with the fact that it's red and it should be green? And I understand that originally the awnings were green, and the planning board approved green, and somehow there was a mix-up with the contractor, and they're now red. Now, I haven't checked today, so they could be green.
They're green, they're back to green.
Oh, they're back to green?
They're green today.
Oh, okay. My mistake. But if you wanna explain a little of that to anyone who's listening?
Sure, I could try to. Let me start out by saying that the planning board has architectural and design controls within the special management districts. If you go back to the time when special management district was created, there was a great deal of concern within the community, one, for the establishment of a special management district, and two, how it was going to look from Route 1. One of the things that the planning board recommended, and the council adopted as part of the special management district, was the requirement for the architectural and design control. The planning board has always looked at Applebee's as bigging the signature building, because it's the first building that you see from Route 1. What the planning board, right or wrong, and I won't take any position on how they were viewing it, were of the opinion that if Applebee's original petition that came in earlier this year, which would have, what they were looking to do is to change the awnings, so that the awnings would actually become signs. They would have LED logos of the apple in each of the windows. And the planning board said, no. They said, we have architectural controls, we want the building not to look like Applebee's USA, but rather reflect what the old Applebee's was when it was originally put in. The new Applebee's that are being built are all having the, the red awnings and the red roofs, as well as the LED lighting. And the planning board said, we would like to have it stay the way it was originally proposed, and we would like to have it stay green. There was no, there was no concern expressed by Applebee's Construction Company that came in before the planning board through the commercial set review. They said, that's fine with us. It's really a local decision, a local decision's been made. What occurred was, from the time the construction manager got the approval from the planning board, there was some type of a miscommunication between the construction company and the construction manager as far as the color. They came in and they put the, the red awnings on. The building official's office then ran into a difficulty, because if you recall, Applebee's was closed for probably three to four weeks, and they renovated the entire facility. So they needed to be able to get finished with everything, so that they could get their CO to be able to reopen. Well, based on the fact that they were in violation of the zoning approvals that they had, they weren't gonna be able to open. We provided through the town an ability for them to open, and gave them a temporary CO, and provided them with a two-to-a-three week period to be able to remedy the zoning violation. We worked with the business, and we accommodated the business, and it wasn't a case of the building, of the town being unfriendly to the business interest, it was rather trying to work with them. They had an internal problem, and they've addressed the internal problem. Why this has become such a signature issue, I'm not sure, but I think it's also not proper for the reporting to suggest that, that the planning board's directive to have the green rather than the red was some arbitrary decision. There was, there was backup information. You may not agree with the decision, but a majority of the board felt that this was the best way of maintaining and preserving the architectural character within that district. One of the other things that they have attempted to do is to have different colors throughout the, the units, to be able to try to have uniformity with the lights, to match brick with stone. And so the planning board has taken that job seriously, but it's a job that the council vested in them as a responsibility for the planning process. I think, you know, I'd be glad to answer anything else that you have on it, but that's, I think, the best explanation I can provide you on that.
No, I'm glad you did, because I think, no, people in the community really don't understand what happened there. And, I mean, if it was a hardship for them to change the red back to green, then if they had amended their original petition and come back before the planning board, I'm sure that could have been addressed. But I think there's a feeling out there that we're, you know, being too picky, and if there is a mechanism where we could make administrative decisions on things like color, if it really isn't totally against what the planning board, the comprehensive plan has determined, I mean, these kind of things, a simple thing like that should be able to be handled in, in some fashion, other than completely tear it down and start all over again. Now, on the other hand, if I had ordered a green awning for my business, I want green. If they put up red, I'm gonna tell them I want green. So I can see where the business certainly would wanna get what they asked for and are paying for.
And that's what our objective was, was we did not wanna see the business hurt, because the construction company had a misorder. And, and Applebee's would have been hurt if we had just been blind to the fact that there was a zoning violation. I think that the opportunity for the council to have dialogue with the planning board will be coming very shortly with the comprehensive community plan update. Because I think the things that you're talking about are things that can be addressed through that comp plan, and once you get an opportunity to do the first reading of what the planning board suggested, there may be changes that you would like to see made, that would provide for greater administrative approvals that would be possible. The concern that I would have from an administrative approval standpoint is, in this case, if we were using this as an illustration, the planning board specifically said in its motion, it shall stay green. So it would be real difficult to have Vin in a position to say, well, red is now acceptable on an administrative basis, if it was contrary to a directive through the board itself. So we would need balance, but I think it's certainly worthy of a discussion.
Well, I think that the impression is out there, that we're not business-friendly, and I think we certainly are, this council is, the town is, and, you know, if green versus red is such an issue, I think maybe these are things we could discuss with the planning board, and maybe in the future they could be handled in a simpler fashion. But again, if they ordered green, they should get green.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, Steve, on that issue, was that LED incorporated within the awning material? I'm just gonna, okay.
Yes. What they were doing is, they were taking a backlit neon sign that had an, that was LED, that was behind the awning itself, it was a piece of metal that fit with the backlit, so that it was illuminated, and they would be apples, the, you know, the logo that they use on each of the windows. And that was at issue. One of the other things, they'd originally come in and they wanted to change the brick veneer to a stack, stacked stone veneer. And the planning board said, what you're asking us to do is for you to replicate the 2012 Applebee construction here, and we would rather have it so that it stands out differently than the Applebee's that you're constructing around the country at this point. As, as I say, it's, to me, there's no right answer here, it's really based on a majority of the board that's been appointed.
I mean, awnings and that face are really cosmetic, in a way, but, I mean, not the LED, but, I mean, I drove through there, the red looked fine, I drove through there, the green looked fine, the red awnings matched the red brick, maybe they didn't have to turn on the LED signs, but micromanaging that is, wow, that's, you know, I mean, pretty soon we're gonna be, what are people putting in their windows? The mattresses before sales, 50% off, I mean, where does it end? 'Cause they weren't looking for any larger footprint or anything. Anyway, that's just-
I'm only reporting on what the regulations allow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, which brings us to town manager's report.
I think I just gave it.
I think so.
Thank you. Town solicitors' report. Okay, we have a few appointments.
Yes, we do. I move that we appoint Edward Mc-
Melchiori.
Melchiori. Edward Melchiori, sorry if I destroyed the name, to the Building Code Board of Appeals and the Minimum Housing Board of Appeals. That, that goes for five years, and that would go from, till June of 2017?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And also, I move that we appoint Jude, I also move that we appoint Jude, in parentheses, J.M. Nussman, to the Economic Development Committee. His term would go from, his, his term would start right now, I would, looks like, and he would go for three years, until July of 2015.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe that's it. Which brings us to New Business Item D. This is a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into and execute a three-year sludge disposal contract with the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, 65 Shun Pike, Johnston, Rhode Island, for the disposal of municipal wastewater sludge for the period July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2015, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the town manager, dated June 29th, 2012, and entitled Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation Sludge Disposal Contract for Fiscal Year 2013 through 15. Steve?
We've been under contract with them since 1997. This would be a three-year contract, but it would really be for 12 months for the guaranteed rate of the $65. Were they to raise the rates in either the second or the third year, we would have the ability to withdraw from the contract. If they don't increase the rates, we would be able to maintain those rates as we go forward.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move approval of New Business Item D.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have New Business Item E. This is a resolution authorizing the tax assessor to abate taxes for persons participating in the elderly tax abatement program, in the amount of $327,119.10. Set abatements are in accordance with the document entitled Elderly Exemption Verification List, and are further described in a memorandum from the tax assessor to the town manager, dated June 19th, 2012, and entitled Elderly Tax Abatement Program.
We're seeing about the same amount of the abatements being issued this year as we have over the past two to three years. There's approximately 227 applications that have been processed and approved to date. Of those 227, the average abatement will be $1,441. The average tax levied for each of the homes that were within the program was an average of about $3,589. Net of the $1,441 credit, program participant average tax bill is $2,148 for the year. I do wanna caution that while we're looking at the $327,119 on the agenda tonight, it has been the council's policy over the past, for people that apply late and have missed the deadline for the program, for the council to consider those up through September. I would expect that we'll see the same type of activity as in prior years, there's usually about $12,000 of additional abatements that would be necessary, they'll come to the council either in August or, or September. Last year, we ended up with an overall program cost on the abatements of $338,000. I'd project that we're probably gonna be in the $338 to $340,000 category when we're done. When we prepared the 2012-2013 budget, I'd used a placeholder of $325,000. However, we also had a one-and-a-half percent non-collectible that we will be below that amount, so we will be in proper shape, even if we went up to the $340. So I'd recommend the council authorize the, the abatements as presented. I'd also note, for the record, that program participation is allowed on a graduated scale. Persons earning up to $13,000 can get a maximum credit of $2,100 under the program, and maximum program participation is for income below- program participation is for income below $37,000. People earning between $35 and $37,000 would have a maximum credit of $450. So if there are people that, uh, would meet the eligibility requirements as far as age 65, ownership of the home for a minimum of, uh, of five years, they should get in touch with, uh, the tax assessor's office for the proper application.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move, all right, go ahead, Polly.
Good, Jim?
I move approval of this great program in form of the Resolution E on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries. We thank you for all of the work, Gene and Steve, that went into that. New Business Item F. This is a resolution authorizing the extension of an award of contract originally granted on July 9th, 2007, and amended on July 12th, 2010, and July 11th, 2011, to W. B. Mason